I'd like to call the September 27th Planning Board meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is minutes from September 13th.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes of September 13, 2016.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain because I wasn't here.
You won't abstain, okay. The next item on the agenda is an approval not required. Has everybody had time to look at this plan?
Okay, so I move that we...
Endorse?
Thank you.
I do have a question.
You have a question, sorry.
I do, I'm sorry.
Gave you a chance, you didn't say anything.
In looking at this, my concern was in adjusting the property line, basically, is what we're doing. Do we have confirmation of approval from the non-applicant lot owner?
I'm thinking they are the same one and the same.
Do we have knowledge of that, or...because I'd hate to do something regulatory and have the property owner and have negative knowledge as to what we're doing.
That's a good question.
I can answer that question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Any person can file an application for a plan approval not required. It does not have to be the owner of the property. That's in your rules, it's in the state statute. It's typically, that's why you don't hold a hearing.
Right, there's no hearing, no discussion.
So any person can apply for approval not required. You don't have to be the property.
So what we're judging on is whether this is acceptable, what we see in front of us or not, yes or no?
The only question in front of the board is does the plan depict a subdivision? That's it. You make no other determinations than this. No property rights, no zoning. It's very simple, but it's still active.
So property rights are off the board. Okay?
So I move that we endorse the Adagio LLC property, the switching of the boundaries, as to modify the common boundary between two lots located at Three Valley Road without regard to buildability, et cetera. Need to get that et cetera in front of me sometime.
Sometime.
Okay.
Right here. If not the termination of the lots comply, that they comply with zoning, it should not be construed as an approval that the lots depicted in the plan are entitled to be building.
Building permits.
So I have a recommendation for endorsement?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? None? Next. This is, this isn't it, they're out of order.
Play might be under need.
Yeah. There we go.
You're gonna go out of order?
Plans?
Okay, you're right.
Okay, that's better. This is a continuation of a public hearing. Applicant Sheila Duarte Andrade, Andrade Realty Trust, definitive plan to divide the existing single lot into two lots with associated roadway located lot zero East Falmouth Highway, map by Falmouth Engineering. For the applicant.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have to recede myself, I have a funding property that I own. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Michael Porcelli from Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. This is a continuation of a subdivision plan review. We requested a continuance at the last hearing due to concern about the quorum. Prior to that, we had submitted the plan, and there were some comments from the town engineer that was sent via a memo to Brian. We met with the town engineer, we addressed every item on his memo, and the plans were revised and submitted, and they reflect all of those changes. In just a quick summary, he was concerned about the fact that there was no turnaround, so we have incorporated a turnaround here. He had some comments about, and suggestions about, better ways to handle the road drainage, which we took his advice and created a drainage easement here, which will have a grass swale, so the runoff from the road will enter this area and be recharged into the ground. And he had some other routine comments about clarifications of some of the labeling of the dimensions on the various curves and line work on the road. To refresh your memory, this is a, there's a key map here, this is a fifteen and a half acre parcel. We're proposing to divide it into two lots, each with just over, slightly over seven acres. Timothy Bourne Cartway in its formal subdivision constructed condition ends at a cul-de-sac here, this is the end of the cul-de-sac. So we're proposing to create a road layout, hammerhead turnaround, all meeting subdivision standards, paved, berms. We did ask for some waivers as part of our submittal.
Did you go through those?
We asked for a waiver from the requirement for a sidewalk, for a requirement for street trees, and street lighting. This is basically creating two lots out of one. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, I have a question. So, Mr. Porcelli, the engineering report says they don't recommend the waiver on the trees, sidewalk, or, what was the third one?
Lighting.
Lighting. So, did you guys all agree on that?
We agreed to disagree.
Okay.
We just didn't think it was necessary, given the fact that we're basically creating one more lot. We will respect the decision of the board.
I've got a question for Brian. If, it's a hypothetical, if this is further subdivided, or if this leads to subdivision of the property beyond it, can we put in something in our decision that says, if such happens, if those two ifs happen, can we go back and then require sidewalks, street lighting, and street trees?
You can condition your approval that any further subdivision into additional lots requires a modification of the decision. So, say there's two lots here today, but there's the potential for further division, division of the property approval not required. You can kind of short circuit that by having that condition in there. You may recall the subdivision of the Cypress Street, Cedar Street, back in, back in 1995?
Right.
That was a decision that the board rendered such that it's a conditioned approval, it needs to go back and see us if you're going to add more lots. And you can do that here, too. So you get, if you're so inclined to grant these waivers because of the lack of lots according to this plan, you can condition your approval so it has to go back and see you, and everything is on the table. If you further divide or subdivide into buildable lots.
That's further subdivision of these two lots. That's not if there's a further subdivision on lots further on down the cart path.
Correct.
So, if, that's only if they do further subdivision for these two lots. How long, how much further does Timothy Bourne Cartway continue down beyond the end of this lot?
Timothy Bourne Cartway is a dirt road that actually meanders all the way out and through beyond and serves several, not several, some homes. And it terminates, there's a road called...
Booker?
Booker, Alexander Booker, and it actually loops through there as a dirt road.
How far up is Booker from here?
I can't say specifically, I believe it's maybe slightly more than a quarter of a mile, less than a half a mile.
Okay. Then I have a continuing for the comment, based upon Brian's answer. Because we saw subdivision down towards 28, because now we're seeing a further subdivision, and there is potential for even more, I am really disinclined to waive the street lights, the sidewalk, and the street trees, simply because I don't want it to be a hodgepodge kind of development of a way that then turns over 30 more years into a street.
Yeah, I share that same concern, because those were the three things that I had bulleted on this as my concerns. And Pat brings up a good point about, I think I'd be willing to waive these at present if there was a condition later on.
But that doesn't necessarily have to do with just these two lots.
Right, right.
Won't apply for...
Yeah, it wouldn't apply for anything further down the line.
So it's maintaining a uniformity of street view?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And we've also decided, when we even had neighbors that didn't want sidewalks, and we decided to put them in anyway, because we're not making a decision for the people that own the land right now. We're taking a really long-range view of where this street can be used for the next 50 years. And we had people put in sidewalks where they didn't want them, because if someone, they sell their house to someone that needs a, either handicapped or some kind of access, they're gonna have sidewalks, that's why we have it.
Well, you also think about the length of this whole thing.
Yeah, it goes on for...
That because of prime walking path for people who live in the area.
You could actually cut through all the way, someday go all the way to Fresh Pond and come out the other way, it could be, it could turn into an arc, you know, a very long walk.
Mr. Chairman, we, we're not, we can accept those conditions.
You're gonna accept them?
We can accept.
Although shorten our discussion, then, if you take...
I wanted to, that's why I said we respect your decision, we can, we understand your concern.
Okay, well, we don't need to discuss that anymore, then. What's up? So, now we have, any other, any other points?
No, it seems, I mean, this is very well done.
I guess the only other thing that we're waiving is the denitrifying septic with only two lots, even though it's over five acres, I guess. I'd be willing to accept that here. For once in my life.
But then we come back and look at it again.
Right, right. Definitive plan.
I thought the review of the project by the town VPW was very well done, and making sure that the plans and calculations were advised and new design meets town requirements. So, I'm good with that.
So, it's still open, so we can...
So, we'll close?
Public comment.
Public comment, oh, that's right. Still open for public comment, is anyone here who'd like to speak to this issue?
I move that we...
Can we assume, then, that all the engineers' recommendations will be included, including the additional gravel base?
Yes, the plans were revised to reflect that.
All right, very good.
All of his suggestions were incorporated.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so, I move that we close the definitive plan hearing of Sheila Duarte Andrade, Andrade Realty Trust, to divide the existing single lot into two lots with an associated roadway located at zero East Falmouth Highway, and I'm not gonna read the map numbers.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you next week for a decision.
Thank you very much. That won't, it's on your agenda for tonight, I didn't...
We're gonna make the changes, though, this has to be rewritten, a few other things.
So you won't be discussing it for the time?
Not tonight, no. We'll just see you next week.
So the motion is to take it under advisement?
Take it under advisement.
Okay, so I move that we take Sheila Duarte's, Duarte Andrade's, Andrade Realty Trust definitive plan proposal under advisement.
I'll second.
It's a discussion decision, but we haven't done the decision rip.
The boards aren't comfortable, so you have a policy above the announced decision to waive that, we could put this on as a courtesy because of the delay and lack of quorum. But the board, we'll see you next week.
I need a second for that.
So we need to vote?
Take under advisement.
Second, I second. See second, and we have revised motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Switch. preliminary plans for five residential subdivision off West Falmouth Highway and Virtue Circle. Do we have any notices, Mr. Secretary?
Yes. Twenty-four butts have been notified by regular mail.
For the applicant?
Have it up there? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is John Benzley, I'm with Beals and Thomas with the engineers for this project. Chris Carlson back here is the trustee of the Carlson Tapley Realty Trust who owns this property. There it is. So as you noted in the application, this is a preliminary plan application for land that's off of West Falmouth Highway. See West Falmouth Highway here on the plan, Virtue Circle. The current property is about 8.1 acres in size, it's highlighted in the dark, and it actually does not include this piece of land here, which is also owned by the applicant, but it's a separate, single-family conforming lot, is not included in the subdivision. Thank you very much. However, as required by the regulations, we have shown it as other land on the site. Hit a button there, it's over there.
Can you go over that again? In my plan, it's marked with the same dark lines as all the others, it really looks like it's part of the subdivision plan. Could you go back to that last one? I'm confused by what you just said.
Oh, so I'm trying to go back down there.
Maybe this is the next one down, it says Carlson.
Yeah, okay, so this, this land here actually is not part of the subdivision that's in there.
Is that correct, Brian?
That one's in.
When I, usually when I see this, though, they're not the same dark lines.
His map is a little more, is twisted a little bit, that's all.
So just to... You wanna talk about lot 260?
He's pointing at 267.
We've identified, in the green line here, I've outlined the actual subdivision of land. Your regulations stipulate that we need to show other land under the common ownership, so we've, I've identified that highlighted here, it's just in common ownership.
Doesn't look the same on our plan, I got you, that's much clearer.
But it's not, it's not part of the actual subdivision.
That's much clearer, thank you. It's not what I see here, but...
So the eight, 8.1 acres is outlined, has frontage on Virtue Circle, comes up and does that. But this particular lot here has a single-family house on it, it's in common ownership. Okay? So, the, the current two lots here, and the screen is kind of tough up here, but the existing house here, 275 West Falmouth Highway, is within the West Falmouth Historic District, that's, that's there. The topography that does show up on the base plan that provided, and again, it's more clear than the plan that was presented to you. All slopes from Route 28 at the back, which has no access off of Route 28, westerly towards West Falmouth Highway. So the proposed subdivision, this cul-de-sac is proposed, I'm sorry, this existing Virtue Circle cul-de-sac in here has a circular turnaround of pavement and West Falmouth Highway. We're proposing to come at the northern end of the property. It's about 1,000 feet extension through to Virtue Circle. The road is designed in accordance with the standards, the design standards, except for two waivers, that I'll get to in a minute. Specifically, in this area here, we have a 60-foot wide right-of-way, and we've moved the actual pavement side towards the, away from the abutting properties up here on Garrison The road has a curvilinear layout, which is identified in the, in the subdivision regulations, is desirable to minimize the speed through the vehicles through the property. So as I noted, that we comply with all subdivision rules and regulations and zoning for all the lots, except we are asking for two waivers. One of the waivers is the centerline offset from an existing way, where the town's looking for 300 feet, the actual distance from Garrison to the proposed subdivision road, and then from Charles Lane back to the subdivision road. This is about 133 feet, this is about 180 feet. We're asking for that waiver for a few reasons, and again, on the, the plan that's up here on the board, it doesn't show up too well. The existing house is right here, which is within the Historic District, and their septic system is in this area right here, so if we were to do an offset directly opposite Charles Lane with the roadway, it would cut right next to that Historic District House there and through the septic system. So to preserve that, we're asking for a waiver of the offsets and the town engineering department in their review of this, they've provided comments, I think is in agreement with that. The other waiver that we're asking for is the, there's a 100-foot tangent distance required or requested between reverse curves, so this curve comes up and then it transitions the other way. This tangent length right here is 43 feet versus the 100 feet in the subdivision regs. The reason that we're asking for that is to provide for the roadway in a manner that accommodates the existing topography out there. And again, I apologize if the screenshot here isn't that good, but you can see that it's all much more clearly, maybe not from your distance.
We have it in Q and A.
At least on the plans in front of you. There's actually an existing, this, this goes up here and up there quite steeply, and there's an existing valley that comes up right through here, we're proposing to put the road in there to minimize the cuts and fills. And again, that is one of the objectives of the subdivision rules and regulations, is to try to comply with topography, minimize cuts and fills to the extent practicable. So by keeping the road here, within that existing valley, and then getting this curve, we're having this, this 43-foot tangent length. If we made that tangent length longer up to here, then this road would curve up through here, which would then put the road up through a steeper cut there, which would not comply with what, what the position is of the definitive plan, or the planning process here. So, we're asking for a waiver from that. And I've identified within the, within the application specifically, the sections of the waiver. We did receive comment letters from the town engineering, as well as from the fire department. Fire department was a reminder, just noting they'd like to see a fire hydrant midway through there. The engineering department had standard comments, a lot of them that deal with what would be required in the definitive plan process in terms of details of the drainage, asking for some double catch base and grades, items like that, which certainly, when we get to the definitive plan process, we will take those certainly seriously and probably comply with those fully. So, we feel that the plan here meets the zoning requirements for the lots, meets the subdivision rules and regulations. We have asked for two waivers, so we're looking for the board's direction on the preliminary plan, hopefully agreeing to the two waivers. I'll answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. What's our maximum grade?
10%.
So we're right out of it.
That's right. And I did provide the proposal, or the proposed profile that shows, and again, it shows the existing grade going up there, a 10% grade. Just to give the board, this is actually not a requirement, but since it is a fairly steep site, it allows the board to actually see how the cuts and fills will be, and how we really are keeping very close to the existing contours out there.
No, I really do have a problem with the waiver that's asked for here for the 133 feet from Charles Lane, because not only is that being asked for, but you're creating another non-conforming there of, what was it, 180 feet, something like that, 100, yeah, 180 feet. Yeah, 180 feet. So you really got two waivers that are being asked because of that. And the reason we don't do that is because of the danger of having roads meeting off-center like that with traffic. Now, I understand, it's only five lots, but people do travel on West Falmouth Highway, and they travel a little faster than they probably should. I'm wondering, rather than having that, the road go all the way through there, if it could be stopped somewhere up here so you have access to the lots that are being created, and then it just goes down through Virtue Circle. So it becomes a dead end up here, and you're not creating a danger on West Falmouth Road for, then it would be two roads.
This would make this dead end more than 500 right away.
I understand.
So that would make it non-conforming. This is set there, and this would probably be more than 500, too. I think the, I think the distance is too long. I think he said this is over 1,000?
It is over 1,000.
It's 1,000 feet.
Yeah, so that's problematic.
Yeah, but, no, I don't think, you see, then you wouldn't need that road there if you just cut it off right about up here, because it adds, it allows access to those lots, and then you don't need that road.
If this road's more than 500 feet, and now it's a dead end.
I understand what you're saying, which is more dangerous, though. Now you've got two roads coming out onto West Falmouth Highway, that this will then be less than 300 feet from that, and that will be less than 300 feet from that. It's 133 in one instance and 180 in another instance. So I'm asking that as a point of concern, because we have disallowed roads that have that configuration. We've made the requirement that they come a different way, so that they're not offset that much. I would, I think I would rather see something about 500 feet there than the danger of West Falmouth Highway from two roads.
I see what you're saying. They wouldn't need this if we allowed this to be, this would be almost a 1,000-foot dead end.
No, not if they stopped it here. They need access to that lot. So you stop it right there.
Okay.
So really, the only additional cost to make these roads intersect in an alignment would be really replacing a septic system. And it would be closer than desired to this house, but it looks like it might still be feasible.
It would certainly make the road, it would make it shorter as well in trying to get up that elevation, using the length of that road so we can make the elevation change.
I see, right.
That certainly does help.
This is the preliminary plan. We're giving them our comments.
That's right.
Right. The board needs to make some comments regards whether you would waive the length of dead-end road vis-à-vis, you know, centerline offsets, and then give guidance to the end, design engineer. Go back with the alternative design.
So would you, before we go to public comment, would you just go through the list of waivers you're asking for again, please?
So there, there are two waivers from two sections of the bylaw. Okay? Now that I have my glasses on, I can read them specifically. So the first waiver is section 30524A6, which is 300-foot offset from centerline intersectings. Okay? And so the Garrison Road right here to the proposed centerline is about 180 feet. And then from Charles Lane back to the centerline, it's about 133 feet. So that, we're looking for a waiver from that section of the subdivision rules and regulations. And just as a note there, Mr. Chairman, so Old Homestead here, and Bowman's Road, and Virtue Circle, all these currently are that same situation where they do not have the 300-foot offset that's there in there. And in looking, the town engineer's review of these comments, I'm sorry, review of the waivers understands the issues and the constraints in terms of the elevation. And in his comment, he identifies that the applicant is requesting a waiver from this regulation. There does not appear to be a better alternative to the proposed location. So I think he agrees. I mean, there are a lot of pluses and minuses to go through, but in weighing the pros and the cons of this, I think the proposed location where we have it is most appropriate. Another aspect of the subdivision rules and regulations that are specifically identified is under section 6A4 of the regulations. It says, "Minor streets," and this is a minor street by definition in terms of the limited amount of traffic on it, "shall be designed so as to minimize through traffic by creating discontinuities and offsetting street intersections." So we're providing that offset as close as we can to the middle of these versus putting a street opposite Charles Lane, which then would go against Article 6A4, as I just read to you. I think that when you weigh all the pros and cons of this, and the safety aspects of this, it certainly is not making for a more unsafe travel condition out there. I think that it certainly meets the subdivision rules and regulations, the intent with this waiver request.
Then there was two others you were looking for?
Then there's one other waiver. This right here is the reverse curve. There's a require, I'll quote the section of the waiver, it's in the application, section 30424B1D stipulates 100-foot tangent length between reverse curves. A reverse curve is where the road curves this way and then curves back that way. And so, right here, there's a straight section of road that is 43 feet long versus the 100 feet. Now, this again is a minor street, and another aspect of the minor streets that's in the regulations, Article 7B2, stipulates that curvilinear alignments shall be used to discourage traffic speeds of more than 25 miles per hour. We're providing a nice curvilinear road in here, that tangent length in there, we're still meeting all the site distance requirements. I think that the tangent length of 100 feet may be more for a higher velocity or higher travel road, but it's actually in your regulations. And again, the town engineering department agrees that this is appropriate, appropriate waiver request. And it really allows us to meet the intents of the subdivision rules and regulations by following the contours very closely to land there without making the road go up through a higher hill in this area here just to get that. So we could certainly do that 100-foot tangent length in there. It would make the road longer. It won't add any safety. It'll create more pavement, you know, it'll create more runoff. It really doesn't have a benefit. So that's why we're asking for that waiver.
Paul, you have something?
Yes, I have a question. When I first looked at this, I looked at topography, and there's quite a difference in topography from the beginning to the end.
Yep.
Over 50 feet in most cases. And your response to Mr. Brown was, it's a 10% maximum slope on the road. I look at station four to five, and it looks like it's 17 feet differential, which is a lot more than 10%. I look at five to six, and it looks like it's like 13 feet on the same basis. And both of those appear to be more than the 10%. So I just ask you to take a look at that, please.
Okay. Well, from four to five, it goes up about eight feet, just about 8.4 feet. It goes from 60.15, the thickest part, the 10% is actually really right around station six. So from station five to six, it goes 68.5 to 78.4, so it's just under 10% there, because we're in the end of the vertical curve.
I'm looking at station five at 71 elevation.
So are you looking at...
I'm not going to argue the point. I'm just saying, take a look at it, because it appears to be far more than 10% in response to Mr. Brown's question.
Okay. It is 10%.
So I have a question.
Go ahead. Is it a piggyback off that one?
Uh, no, it's not.
Mark, you go first.
All right. So my question is, in consideration of the nonoffset for that intersection across from Charles Lane, actually, if it were to be directly across from Charles Lane, just eyeballing it, what kind of impact would that have on the grade, on what you've given us here? Would it go above the 10% requirement?
No, I think we could still achieve it without going above the 10% requirement. Some of the vertical curves where it comes down, it's probably going to be, have to come down into West Falmouth Highway at a much steeper grade, which you never want to do. You know, vehicles coming down there, you want to have a fairly flat area for them to slow down and stop before they, particularly in icing snow conditions.
That was, I mean, that was one of the concerning things, was would, from what's depicted here with where the access to West Falmouth Highway is now, just eyeballing it, estimating, if across from Charles Lane, would this grade of the road increase to possibly give consideration to what you just said with regard to safety?
Yes, it would have to increase, because the, either that or we'd have to cut more up at the top.
Okay.
Which again, does not achieve what's being requested by minimizing cuts and fills and trying to keep with the existing topography.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Doug?
Would you mind going back to that? Did I hear you correctly that you said that it's more desirable to have offset street intersection than to actually directly intersect?
The, I'll read the section of the subdivision rules and regulations. It's Article 7A4, which says, "Minor streets, of which this is, systems shall be designed so as to minimize through traffic by creating discontinuities and by offsetting street intersections." What they don't want is people traveling down and going through, you know, Charles Lane and up and through here and having continuous travel ways. It's having those offsets so that it makes it, cuts down speeds and...
On minor roads.
Well, that's offset at 300 feet.
Right.
Example is belly. You have a very large subdivision with lots of streets, a street system, and your rules and regulations, we try to offset them on minor street systems in small, in those types
One of the concerning things, though, I think that Pat has brought up is, you have the category of minor streets that are dumping onto a major street. And yes, Old Homestead Road and Bowman's Lane are offset from...
Virtue Circle.
Virtue Circle. But, I mean, just to point that out. West Falmouth Highway can get busy.
Which is more argument for his lower grade entering to it.
Any more comments from the board?
I'm fine with the smaller tangent. I think if you can minimize, go with the geography of the, and the topography of the land, I would be in favor of that waiver. Pat's suggestion about a cul-de-sac up in there, I'm not really in favor of dead-end roads. I kind of like the idea of always having one, more than one way in and out of a development. And I look at that more as for safety reasons, getting equipment, fire equipment, plow equipment. Living on a cul-de-sac, I end up with all the snow and the entire development at my doorstep. So I would, and if I had an emergency, it would be very difficult for any vehicle to get into close to my house. So that's why I'm not in favor of dead ends and cul-de-sacs at the end. So I can't come up with any suggestions for that. You know, I'm sitting here looking at the topography, and I don't know. I really haven't made up my mind on that aspect yet, but the other waiver I'm all
I'm fine with what he's presented here. I think that both waivers are not a bad suggestion. I would hate to see a larger pitch on the road for the elevation. And the curve the way he has it now, certainly is going to reduce any speed that would go through there substantially. I know it's not 100 feet distance, but the shorter actually makes it a safer road, as far as I'm concerned. And it is, appears, there's going to be five more homes in there, so still, I think it's a safer way of doing it, the way it's proposed.
Doug?
Even though our bylaw suggests less cutting where possible, I would recommend more so you're not so close to the 10% maximum. The only trouble is, lot three is the highest point, and you've got to get to it, so. But it seems like you could cut a little more between six and seven and be a little, little safer there.
Station six and seven?
Right.
We'd cut off more the top of the hill.
Right.
In there. And again, it's not just the consideration for the roadway, which again, follows very closely here. The topography that shows up on your plans, people here can't see, is it goes up a bit steeper in through here, and then there's a mound back in through here as well. So if we were to cut six and seven where you're looking at here, then the driveways to get up to these lots here are also going to require more cut.
They're both...
And then the houses will also be a little bit lower, too, which will also require a little bit more cut. So I think...
I guess the topographic lines don't really show me that, but I'll have to take your advice on that.
Okay. Public comment?
Sure. Fine idea.
Anyone here from the public wish to speak on this?
She said yes.
She has a question.
If you do, you must stand up, identify yourself, and ask your question.
I'm Anne Carlson, and I'm a butter to this property. And I'd like to know where the utilities are going to be accessed into there, and I'd also like to know, oh, where the work trucks are going to be going. Like, maybe on Virtue Circle where we live.
That's a public road. I mean, they have the rights to use it.
It's a private...
I know, but I believe that the butters, the properties have the rights to use the road.
Right.
I will let the engineer answer the question.
So from a construction standpoint, it certainly makes sense to access from the wider road. Virtue Circle, the pavement in there is not, is not real wide, so when they're bringing construction vehicles in and out, I certainly think they'd use this access here and probably get in a little bit and identify a staging area likely back in here where they're going to be clearing for a house anyway, to allow for the vehicles, the construction vehicles with the overnight of there, and also when they're moving some of the cut that may need down to the fill, they may stockpile it in this area here. So I certainly think the construction access will come through this route here. In terms of the utilities, we'll comply with all the subdivision rules and regulations. Utilities will be underground. Well, the idea is to have onsite septic systems. The only thing that probably would be done in Virtue Circle is connecting to the existing road.
All the questions should be to the microphone, please. No private conversation over there, I'm sorry. You're allowed to ask the question, but if you wouldn't ask it through me, fun, so everyone can hear you with a microphone, then we all know what you're saying. You don't want a private conversation over there.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Anyway, you got the question.
She asked if the utilities...
We didn't hear you.
I asked from the beginning.
I know, he heard you.
From the beginning, I asked about the road and utilities.
And then she further asked about the utilities that may come off of Virtue Circle. I think that the electric and water will come off of West Falmouth Highway. We're going to have onsite septic systems. The engineering department did comment, I'm sorry, yeah, I guess it was the engineering... The, uh, engineering department did comment, I'm sorry, yeah, I guess it was the engineering, the DPW, the water department, said that we'd have to loop the water, which we certainly would intend to. There's a 12-inch main in West Falmouth Highway. There's a 6-inch main that comes up in Virtue Circle and the town has asked that we loop those two for a safety standpoint. So we may have to, I'm not sure exactly where the water main is in Virtue Circle, so we may have to go in there a little bit to do a cut to connect into that and that certainly will be all repaved, repaired.
Do you anticipate, do you anticipate any improvements to Virtue Circle over what it is?
You know, I don't think that the neighbors are asking for it. There may be some, the vegetation has started to come in a bit, um, they may wanna have that trimmed a little bit. I think most of the traffic as well as construction vehicles are probably gonna use this access, uh, the main access for these five lots in here. Um, I don't think there are any improvements that would be necessary in Virtue Circle. Some trimming of vegetation wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
You'll cover access in your definitive plan you'll show, but that was a question that was brought up tonight and your plan will cover that.
In terms of the construction vehicle access? Yeah, we could identify that with the submission.
That'll be identified for everybody, so it'll be on the plan.
Jim?
Yes?
Um, one of the other, um, suggestions made on the referral from engineering was in regards to catch basin, a double graded catch basin. Um, the applicants amenable to that?
They certainly are. I mean, typically what we'd look at is what the, the flow is, how much flow's coming down there, the slope of the road and how wide in the 25-year storm the flow in the gutter line would extend out. And if it warrants a double catch basin, we'd put in a double catch basin. Those calculations would come with the definitive plan, um, you know, the cost difference. I think that when the engineering department sees the calculations as well as redo those calculations, we'd identify if the double catch basin's appropriate. I'm sure if it's appropriate, we'd more than want to do that.
But, um, more data information would fine tune that.
That's right.
Everybody else?
I see they've asked, what will the name of the road be? More virtuous circle?
I thought that the trustees maybe perhaps called it something relative to history. We are in that historic district here. I think the Tappy family is...
Hold it, hold it, time up, please. Excuse me. All comments need to come up here, please. If you wanna say anything, would you please come to the microphone, please? No private conversations back there. All, in this meeting, everything's gonna be addressed to the board. No private conversations. That's our rule.
Just if I may address that, I'm Chris Carlson, trustee of the Tappy Carlson Trust. We have, we don't have any names really, definitely in mind, but we would name the property. We thought perhaps something to connect it to the history of the place. It's been in our family for four generations. Uh, we thought of just something appropriate to that. I, but we've not made any decision yet.
Okay.
We've had a lot of silly thoughts that have been discarded out of hand, but we won't share those.
Anybody else who might speak?
Anything else, any questions of me?
Step up.
My name's Joe, uh, Pat Nadya. I live, I have property at 32 Virtue Circle, which is about this property and I have concerns on how they're gonna handle the drainage coming off onto Virtue Circle and will they do any road improvements to Virtue Circle as far as pavement with the trucks coming up to develop this property?
Um, in terms of drainage improvements, Mr. Chairman, we do have a, the roadway that the high point's roughly about here and so there will be some, some drainage that comes down here. We've got two sets of catch bas, or a set of catch basins right here and we've provided a drainage easement here, um, at the left where we anticipate that that additional runoff will be picked up, uh, treated, put down into the, in the, back into the ground so that we're not increasing any runoff. And in terms of, his question on improvements in the truck access through there, again, we do anticipate the truck access will come off of West Falmouth Highway and not off of Virtue Circle, so there shouldn't be any construction vehicle impacts, uh, on Virtue Circle. There weren't any, there are not any plans to do any improvements to Virtue Circle itself. Again, other than whatever's required to do the drainage, the, uh, water main connection.
Okay. Thank you.
I assume it's 'cause the roadway in Virtue Circle is pretty, it's like 40 years old.
Yeah, the roadway's pretty...
People at home can hear this, that's why we're doing it. We want everyone to be hearing it.
Yeah, okay. 'Cause the roadway's pretty, it's 40 years old, it's a lot of valleys and been fused up, it's more, maybe worse than it is.
They'll address that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir? One more.
Uh, my name is Paul Stoller. I'm at, uh, 31 Garrison Road and I'm kinda speaking for Dr. John Gould, who's, who's away and, uh, 'cause we've been talking about this since it came out. And he was under the impression, whether it's in writing, um, the, the previous owners of this property, that there was a wildlife corridor that went up through this, uh, this piece of land. Um, that was the first question. He didn't know what, what happened to that, uh, if there ever was one, but he was under the impression, and there are some other neighbors also, they're under the impression that there was a wildlife corridor through this land. Uh, I don't know all the details, I'm just more or less relaying what he asked, he asked me to ask tonight. Uh, I don't know if anybody can address that right now, if I have another question, but I don't know.
He's got your question for the next time. There, this is a preliminary plan. He's writing down everything you say and he'll address it.
Okay.
That's what we do this for.
'Cause the other question has to do with the, um, the setback of the buffer when they were clearing, declaring the land. Uh, we talked to the gentleman that was doing the clearing and he said there would be a 40-foot buffer between the back of our property and, um, the properties, um, in the development. And then we're looking, we're looking at that circle at the top there and it shows that it's, it's right on, just basically right on the line, which leads me to believe, I, I believe these circles are where they can put the houses.
The circle's there to show us that they have the room to put the house, it's not the actual location of the house.
Okay.
The lot's not buildable unless they can show us that circle.
Okay.
That's just a, you know, it, it could be anywhere on the lot. That's not where the house is gonna go. That's a requirement that, that the show has, the lot has the right dimensions.
Okay, so the house could go...
Go anywhere.
So my question is, are there gonna be 40-foot buffers between our property lines in the back and whatever? Because I, I believe the, the town lot is, it can be 10 feet, the house could be 10 feet from the line?
Right.
Yeah, 10 feet is the little requirement, yeah.
Right, and, uh, are there gonna be 40-foot buffers? I guess that's, that's, that's my question. Uh, the other one had to do with what, uh, the lady brought up about, we couldn't understand why there had to be a road to go all the way through, uh, because the road is becoming very close to, uh, to the back of the properties there, so it seems to make more sense, but there wouldn't be a, a road that goes through, but I guess he, more or less, um, addressed that. Um, is there any... Do they know what size the houses are gonna be or is that something, this is kinda preliminary to?
It's not something we do.
Right.
We do subdivisions and the houses are 20% lot coverage and any changes in that is a zoning board. It's actually not even this board that addresses that. We do lot lines and subdivisions.
Okay.
But you're afraid to make your comments?
Yeah.
You may or may not incorporate them if it's feasible for them.
Okay. Um, okay, so those are my, those are my questions.
Next, you gotta, you can...
Uh, my name is TJ Turner. I live at, uh, 289 West Falmouth Highway. Um, this heavy machinery road that won't go through Virtue Circle will go right next to my yard. Uh, I'm on the corner. Um, and I just, the Carlsons have been great neighbors for a long time. I'm happy that they're doing this. I, I just have a real concern with the proximity of that road to my house, my yard, my backyard. Um, so while I'm glad the trucks aren't going on Virtue Circle, I'm not too excited about where they may be going, but that's my comment. Thank you.
Next.
Good evening. Pamela Truesdale. I'm a director butter on 47 Garrison. Um, the first thing I'd like to do is offer a comment to the board for you to seriously consider, which is the roadway that they're proposing just to the, um, that would be to the east of Garrison Road, um, I would encourage all of you to go out and drive up Garrison Road and then drive down Garrison Road and try to take a left-hand turn onto 28A. The site distance is barely visible at that point around the curve because, make no mistake, just to the north of Garrison Road, there is a steep curve on 28A which curves around. I can guarantee you there will be a lot less site distance for that new roadway, um, coming off of this proposed subdivision. So please take that into consideration, otherwise I think there's gonna be quite a number of accidents. It's treacherous enough getting out of Garrison. I can only imagine with the less site distance they have around that curve, that it's gonna be worse. Couple of questions, and they may not be able to be answered at this preliminary, but I'd like them to be considered, um, for a more definitive subdivision. One is, um, I've lived on that road on Garrison for 20 years. It's been wonderful having that inherited landscape in the backyard. Change is inevitable. However, I would like to know if these proposed five houses are spec houses or whether they're going to be stay in the Carlson family for family purposes only and perhaps be used as summer houses. I think that's a legitimate concern as to whether that we're gonna have full-time neighbors back there or part-time neighbors in our backyards. I'd also like to know in the future about the construction and whether it's gonna be done in phases or whether all five of these houses are gonna be done at once and when is it likely to start and what is that construction phase going to? I mean, how many years are we gonna be living with, um, construction in our backyards? And I think that's it, but my most driving concern right now is that access, that new access onto 28A. Please look at that carefully. Thank you.
Any more public comments? You prepared to address any of these now or you're just gonna bring them the next time?
Uh, I think we'd, we'd certainly address them when we come back in, uh, if we come back in with the definitive plan. Some of the questions there, I, just for clarity effect, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not clear on what the site distance issue is. I know the town engineer looked at this and I've, I've been out there and looked at it as well, didn't think that there was a site distance issue there, so I'm not clear as it, whether she's referring to looking, uh, north or south, um, the site for all...
Oh, excuse me. Looking to the north.
Looking to the north, is what she's saying.
Okay. Well, I, I think the site distance to the north from, from this roadway, we're farther back from Garrison and, uh, farther from the curve, Garrison is certainly gonna have more site distance there.
Your site distance is okay, theirs is not.
Our site distance would be much better, yes. I can't do much about their site distance, unfortunately. Uh, and in terms of the spec houses, uh, we certainly can't commit to that one way or another, um, in terms of the subdivision.
Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Dave Schneider. I live at 35 Garrison and I just wanted to corroborate what Pamela said about when you get to the bottom of Garrison Road and you're about to pull out onto 28A, whether you look north or whether you look south near where their road's gonna come, cars coming from farther up Route 28A have not slowed down yet. They're coming quite rapidly and cars coming out of town are speeding up. So making a right-hand turn or a left-hand turn from Garrison Road onto 28A is problematic. I mean, really, I've had a, a number of close calls myself, so where they propose that road to come out, I don't know. I think it might be a problem.
Okay. Well, you've certainly heard a lot of comments.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, you may. Please come up and...
Do I say anything?
Please do.
Coming out of Virtue Circle going to the left, many times I've almost been wiped out. It's a blind, and they come off the highway flying and you don't see anybody and you pull out and they're on top of you. It's scary.
It's really overgrown vegetation there.
It is. And it's been identified by the engineers in their referral.
Mr. Chairman, that, that comment, I, I certainly do agree with. That raised, was raised by the, the engineer in terms of the site distance coming out of Garrison. Um, it's there here. It does curve a bit. Um, I think the problem there, and I, the engineer, town engineer didn't identify specifically of what it is, but there are a bunch of evergreens that are right there that are right near the edge of the pavement there. And to improve, improve that situation, I would suggest that the DPW that would be in the right of way might wanna limb those, those trees up for six feet or so that would significantly improve that site distance issue there.
Mm-hmm. That's a good point.
Yeah, yep, yep. Okay. I'll thank you. See you again.
Okay. We'll see you, uh, probably next week for a little bit of a discussion.
Decision will be next week?
Yep.
Will you need our attendance at that? Questions or...
That's your discussion. That's your discussion.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think you've heard all the comments, so I don't think we'll come up with anything new, but it's still open, though. We can't, no. Public can still comment next week, right?
It's not corrupt.
But typically speaking, this is...
This is it.
It's not a hearing, this is...
Not a hearing, just a discussion.
They issue a preliminary decision, they come back...
Then you come back and we'll start over again.
Preliminary or...
Okay.
Just the board.
Just the board.
Just the board.
This is only...
Keep in mind, there'll be another whole hearing, again, they start over again.
This is just preliminary so they can get our sense of what we think of their...
Then they start over again with another public hearing.
Male concerns.
Okay. Can you guys, if you're gonna leave, no discussions here, please? We have other business to attend to.
Just one quick question. Do the butters, uh, get notified by mail when the next meeting is...
Certified.
Certified.
So we'll move on. Next item, applicant is JJ EC Development LLC, site plan review to convert current bank building with drive-through, to a fast food restaurant with drive-through located at Four Sandwich Road. Okay, we have a, a, a decision. He's all geared up.
Okay, I'll, I'll read the motion drafts, September 20th, 2016. Motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of JJ EC Development LLC under Article 39, Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Site Plant, Dunkin' Donuts Restaurant and Subsurface Sewerage Disposal System Prepared for Cadet Enterprises, Four Sandwich Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. Five pages prepared by BSS Design Inc., dated August 29th, 2016, revised 9/2016 in scale. One inch equals 20 feet, together with architectural plans entitled Dunkin' Brands Eat, Drink, Think PC, Number New, Four Sandwich Road, Falmouth, Mass., Bonstal County. Four pages prepared by Agronian and Associates Inc., Architects, dated July 28th, 2015, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant, JJ EC Development LLC, proposes to convert an existing bank building with drive-through at Four Sandwich Road to a Dunkin' Donuts fast food restaurant with drive-through with associated parking, drainage, and landscaping. The project calls for 30 parking spaces, five parking spaces more than required by the existing use, 25 spaces. The existing building will not be expanded upon and will continue to use the use of a bank ATM in the building vestibule. The applicant... The applicant has addressed certain issues raised in the referrals from the Falmouth Engineering Division, dated nine twenty, twenty sixteen, respectively in the form of revised plans approved here. These issues include the addition of a parking table, outlining parking requirements for the proposed site use, relocation of the dumpster, and the inclusion of registered surveyor and registered engineer stamps. The planning board finds the landscaping acceptable and acknowledges the applicant's efforts to reduce sound from the Duncan Donuts drive-through ordering kiosk and damper automobile light pollution through the planting of a landscape buffer to help mitigate nuisance to direct butters. The board acknowledges and appreciates the efforts by the applicant and the development team. The planning board has also reviewed architectural drawings entitled Duncan Brands Eat, Drink, Think PC, number new, Four Sandwich Road, Falmouth, Mass., Bonestable County. Four pages prepared by Aronian...
Am I pronouncing that right? Aronian?
And Associates Inc., Architects, dated July twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, and the board finds these acceptable as presented. The site is located in Costa Pond Overlay District for Great Pond. The proposed septic flow for the proposed fast food restaurant is five hundred and twenty gallons per day. The designed septic flow for the existing bank is two hundred and twenty-five gallons per day. The site is slated for correction to the Phase Two sewer service area for Great Pond, therefore the planning board waives the analysis of impact EIS study required under zoning section two forty ninety-eight. The applicant has also provided the board with a traffic impact analysis that finds the project provides safe and efficient access onto and off of the site. Conditions, number one, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modifications decision is necessary pursuant to section two forty-one eighty-three B of the zoning bylaw. No permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, the applicant will provide a bicycle act as well as posting public transit and ride-share information.
Check in.
Any further discussion?
Well, the only weak point of this is traffic impact, but you know we've accepted the finding of the traffic expert. But if I go to work, you know, every morning I drive down Sandwich Road and if I find I have to sit there more than one point six seconds longer each morning, what recourse do I have?
Well, there are mitigation efforts in the way for that highway already down the road. We know it's being dealt with.
Yeah, but we're dealing with the, this site or this site plan review at the moment.
This particular site.
And so I'm kind of discouraged that it only deals with the site itself and we're, as a planning board, supposed to look at off-site impacts from development as well. And so that's what my point was with regard to making the points about the Route twenty-eight transportation master plan, which identified that intersection that's so concerning, off-site, of course, as being one of the worst of the ten in the master plan. And so with an approximate fifty percent increase of traffic acknowledged by the traffic report that's cited in the draft here, it's obviously going to impact that intersection. And the bylaw says the provisions shall be made to avoid traffic congestion. So I, you know, I'm erring on the side of caution and I can't go with, obviously with this, so... But I made my, my points before.
What alternative do we have?
I don't think there's any reasonable provisions or conditions this board could impose that would be, that would solve the solution at hand. The solution at hand has been given mitigation recommendations from McMahon Associates in their master plan and ultimately a roundabout, apparently. But like I said, we can't impose that. And so, so based on what I perceive, my personal take on what the site plan review article in the zoning code said, we shall not, without provisions, we shall not make more congestion. And so that being said, I don't see reasonable provisions being able to be imposed. So I would say jeepers. With the acknowledgement of fifty percent increase in traffic by the applicant's study itself from the existing use, you're in, you're compromising your bylaw, what the bylaw says.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, Ryan. So in a case like this where we feel compelled to approve, because it's a good project otherwise...
On-site.
You know, it's really, very good project and I'm, I'm going to vote for it anyway. But in a case like this, what would be a mitigation effort? Is there any...
Well, you can't compel any improvements to a state highway.
Right.
Remember, it's a site plan review. What you're thinking about sometimes is a discretionary special permit that others may or may not issue with regards to the use of the land. A site plan review is not even a permit. It just goes down to the village commissioner who has actually the option to incorporate or not incorporate it, or the Board of Appeals can incorporate it or not incorporate it. So again, the rubber hits the road with the special permit that issues from the Board of Appeals. Site plan review, you make every effort to make the site plan work. And the example I give you is the Duncan Donuts off of Laurinette.
And I guess what, what's happening with Mark and I, it's actually we're going into a use change and that's not our purview.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm just saying...
You know, that is, that's another board that deals with uses.
The generic, the generic aspect of it.
Right. I'm, I find it challenging, but then no one could ever change the use of their building if it increases the traffic. But the zoning already says you're allowed to have certain uses.
But, but being, being, you know...
It's just, I don't have an answer mark.
Yeah, but site planning, I mean, in defense of, you know, what I've brought up to the head here, site planning, although proper and adequate for the actual site itself...
Correct.
Has to include a, an understanding of development impacts on, in this case, Falmouth's traffic network. The whole point of the master plan was to give the community a comprehensive overgeneralization. Okay, then, so that says, that identified that intersection as being one of the worst non-signalled impalement. Now you have a applicant that says approximately fifty percent more traffic it's going to be generated from and to that. Some ripple effect is bound to go to that intersection. Then I go back to the bylaw and says, can I allow that? You know, fifty percent is quite a lot. There's already, by virtue, let me finish, by virtue of the master plan, it says it's an E and F as far as the level of, of service. So can I actually allow, though the, the more specific traffic study done by McMahon says it's eight D. That difference is unsettling to me, number one. And so through experience, and Doug has echoed this and called it a, a site plan or a, a site visit per se, I've, I know that's busier than one point six seconds personally. I'm not an expert, so I can't make that claim, but personally as a resident, I can. So that being said, putting everything together, it's like, do I have to err on the side of caution on this one?
I, I know that we've, this board's dealt with lots of traffic on that highway and I know traffic counts. That's some of the highest traffic we have in town.
It is. It's number one.
So, but if you would take that analogy further, then we can never change into the uses on that road. If we have a site plan and somebody wants to change the use on that street, you're saying they're going to be locked in with the use they have.
Well, the use or a lesser impacted use.
Well, that's just pointing the other side of the argument.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that. I totally understand.
I only bring it up because these are the constraints we're under and I just don't want to just approve this and not make mention of the fact we're kind of bound by these regulations and rules that we're in.
Yeah.
Just so that, you know, I don't have to hear it at the Duncan Donuts coffee shop. Why'd you guys approve that? You know, you're going to make traffic worse. I don't see any other recourse.
I'd like to see it at least in the draft someplace that it was discussed, you know, to a degree.
That we're cognizant of the difficulty that will be posed by it, but we cannot do it under the constraints that we operate it under.
And the professional traffic study that we're bound to respect.
We have to, but...
I think we have to make that...
We'll go all the way down to the end and come back to the, if you don't like that pattern.
The second one's more in-depth.
I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I own a commercial building three doors away from here. I'm at this intersection a lot and yes, it's busy, but people are very polite and they let one car go, one on twenty-eight goes, one goes, one on twenty-eight goes. The traffic moves fairly well there for the amount of traffic that's there and I know it's going to add more traffic to it. How much remains to be seen, but I don't think it's, I don't think the traffic moves as badly as, as being portrayed here.
I'm not saying it's bad and you're right, it's a very polite intersection and there will be a little bit less up the road, so it'll be moving a little faster. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying it's something that we're going to hear about it later, what were we thinking? And we are thinking, but we have limits to what we can do.
I think the issue was created when we created the zoning and we said these are the uses you could have on that, on that street. That was done a long time ago. That's really what we're talking about here.
That's true.
Not a site plan review, we're getting into...
It's a contributing factor, that's for certain.
Right, that's not our job, that's also not what we're supposed to do. But, oh, go ahead.
I'm just curious about one thing, that schedule. It would appear what the client, what the applicant's doing is minimizing the construction of the building and to move into this as quickly as you can, which makes a lot of sense. And yet we talk in the, in the motion about increasing design flow for, from a bank from two twenty-five to a fast food restaurant of five twenty gallons per day. And yet we say it's going to be slated for connection to the Phase Two system. What's the schedule for the Phase Two system?
Again, that's a board health issue. I, I mean, you, you...
It's in our motion.
But...
I'm, I'm just, I'm curious. I'm not saying we're stopping because of that, I'm just curious what that schedule is.
Most of the time, but my experience is they're giving waivers away like crazy until the sewer gets put in and it's really a board health issue and they have hearings for that and it's not our, not on our agenda. That's the board health issue.
It's in our motion, they didn't have to be connected.
It's there. They're just saying they're connecting. I think that's so we don't put a denite system in it or something like that. It's not our issue.
It says slated for connection, that's not meaning it's going to be connected.
So the board has been aware in the past up and down T-Ticket Highway when Phase One came in, sundries, other couple of farms, whatnot. You have deferred in your site planning, at least, the imposition of the EIS and installation of denitrification, knowing that Phase One is on the way. My understanding of Phase Two will be forthcoming in the next five years. Typically, the lifetime of these systems is somewhere between fifteen years, twenty years. The board has deferred. We make that recommendation here because Phase Two is probably five years away. The idea was that Phase One will bond, Phase Two, Great Bond, and work their way down to twenty-eight to meet all our TMDS. And it's within the lifetime of the denitrification system.
Barring some other technology coming in, taking over.
I, I just wanted to mention that when we're talking about this fifty percent increase in traffic, it's, it's only fifty percent over what the bank traffic was generating.
Right.
So we're not increasing the entire traffic on the entire road.
So you're only looking at like twenty, in peak time, I guess, I did the calculations, like twenty-two more vehicle trips...
Per hour.
Per hour.
Yeah.
Than what the bank...
And the other component to that is there is another Duncan Donuts down the street that is going to go away. So that traffic that gets stopped at that section of T-Ticket Highway will be eliminated. It, it's, it's an accordion effect, no matter where you have a Duncan Donuts, you're going to have traffic. And I said from the beginning that you, we know this, what this use is, we have a pretty good idea of what these Duncan Donuts restaurants do to a particular area and I think knowing what's going in there is better than not knowing what could possibly go in there in the future. I think the fact that it's a low-impact business on the site, a lot of the site is going to be left open, the building footprint is small, the parking footprint isn't that large. So that, that's how I look at it. I look at the, the traffic being eased up from further down T-Ticket Highway and a building being reused, nice-looking building, and it's a nice big site, and I think they've done a lot to mitigate sound and things like that, where some other building that could come in and cover most of that lot and could care less about the neighbors. I think that's probably why I would vote in favor of this.
Well, we've had a motion in a second and some good discussion. Are we ready to vote?
Ready.
Okay, the motion's been read.
All in favor?
Aye.
Composed?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. That was good discussion. Thank you, everybody. Two more discussions, one more. Planning board discussion, request for release of covenant for forty-nine Payola Drive. That street's been done a long time.
Sure. There's a letter, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, it was hidden in the wrong folder. It's from Lieutenant Corrine. Regards forty-nine Payola Drive, it's pretty quick and easy. You want to just take a moment to read it?
To Town and Falmouth Planning Board, dear sir or ma'am, in closing, please find a Form J release from a covenant along with a check for one hundred dollars. I am also enclosing a copy of the recorded covenant for your ready reference. It appears that this lot, as well as others, were developed some fifty years ago. Homes were constructed and the property has changed hands a number of times since then. A recent examination of the title uncovered the fact that it does not appear the planning board covenant was released for this particular lot. In an effort to clear up the title, it would be appreciated if the board could issue a release to rectify this issue. Please advise if there will be need to formally present at the board. Should you have any questions regarding this, please not hesitate to ask. Thank you for your attention. Kevin Corrine.
So the background here is, it's actually not covenant, it's, it's an old performance bond from nineteen sixty-six, which is not a covenant, a road covenant. Road covenants preclude conveyancing, selling, building on the lots until the road's put in. Back in the sixties, before they made some changes in subdivision control law, they allowed for these unsecured bonds. They don't allow them anymore.
So we don't have eighteen thousand dollars sitting in a bank account?
It's unsecured. That's correct.
It's just a promise to pay.
It's a promise to pay by someone who is long gone and hard to find. The road was never completed. A predecessor board in nineteen eighty declined to release the same performance bond, unsecured performance bond. So that's the background there. That's some issues with the drainage, they placed some of the pavement outside the right-of-way. But it goes, you know, it goes way, way, way back.
So this is impairing now just one lot? Or is it the whole subdivision?
No, all the lots on that, it's actually, all the lots.
All the lots have the same.
All the lots, correctly. They're only requesting that release for lot ten. But you would have to release it technically for everybody, if it's the will of the board. In the past, you haven't, predecessor board, you haven't.
They have not. So this has been asked before and turned down?
1980 was 36 years ago. It's up to the board. You can't enforce the bond after 30, the promissory note after 30 years. Is it worth, is it worth it? I guess, yeah.
So then now it seems that possibly this person at 49 Payola Drive is trying to sell their house, and this has come up as an encumbrance.
You get a, you get a nervous bank attorney, or a new bank attorney, and it's actually not a covenant. It says you can't sell or convey or build on the lots. It's just, it's a promissory note that you'll finish the road. Each lot has a fractional, it's, it's an $18,000 bond, unsecured. Each lot has a portion of that $18,000 as a percentage of their frontage on the road. So I have a thousand-foot road, 10 lots, one-tenth of that is yours, technically against the whole subdivision.
I'm sorry.
Doesn't happen to us.
Doesn't hap, right.
I didn't even know you had a phone.
Nobody does.
Stinger. So, yeah, it's, it's really up to the board. If you don't release it, my sense is they can still convey and sell, get another title attorney. If you do, you can't enforce the bond.
They would, yeah, they'd get a title insurance policy.
Just by virtue of that, you can't enforce the bond. It expired 30 years, so why, why stand on the principle of, of not really a covenant, but.
Is this draining into your bond?
I don't know.
Go ahead, Pat.
It's not a covenant. It's a bond. It's an unsecured bond. You can't enforce it. But if the road deteriorates, can the 18 residents of those 18 lots come after the town for not having enforced it back when we should have?
No. They'll be coming back to enforce it against themselves.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I know, but I just don't know what the ramifications might be.
This, this would alleviate the town from everything with regard to this, I mean, in this contract.
These unsecured bonds, just like those old letters of credit, we don't, they're not acceptable forms of security anymore. Subdivision control law changed in the, in the 80s because of these old unsecured bonds. But it's there. Title attorneys pick it up. Let's see if we can get a release. This is the first time on Payola. Typically speaking, they don't bother with them. This attorney.
So will, will we keep the attorneys well-employed if we leave this in place? Because it'll come up. That's really what it is.
Or we can try to make them less nervous. But, you know, it's up, it's up to the board. My, my sense is probably better, well, if you want a recommendation, I'll give you one.
Okay.
What's your recommendation, Brian?
I just.
Yeah, so I will move that we release this, ah, sorry, Paul.
Was that covenant for the development?
Yes.
Well, this is a release for a specific address. Is that release?
Ryan already said it's going to release tomorrow. We already covered that. He said it earlier. Looking just to re, just to forgive or release the, the bond, the 1966 bond on file, given the recording information, it's on that letter. I don't have it. And that way, eventually, someone else sitting at this table 10 years from now will get the same letter, and sometimes they, they come back. So it just cures it.
So I move that we release the 1966 bond for Payola Drive in its entirety.
Any further discussion? Paul, you got any guess?
Who's that developer?
Payola Realty Trust. Imagine that.
Trust is a key word.
Trying to see who the trustee is.
Oh, long gone, Mr. [inaudible].
All right. Mr. Whitney was chairman of the planning board back then. Okay, all in favor? Aye. It's released.
Please, please.
Okay. I'll get the letter back. Next thing is committee reports. We have a couple. Pat, you want to?
We had the first meeting of that small joint subcommittee of the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission last week. And we had Kirk Bosma give a presentation, which you all have seen before, and I did not see because I was not here at the time he gave it, about the way their firm has studied mitigation measures and floods, flood areas with the dynamic model for the coastline of Massachusetts. And Paul was kind enough to print off this voluminous report for Oak Bluffs, and they do an incredible job of defining over, let's see, to 2070, and three discrete periods, the current, 2030, and 2070, as to where certain storm events will impinge upon the coastline and what kinds of damage or flood depths we might be able to expect. We were all very fascinated by this, and in particular sense, we're concerned in, about resiliency of Falmouth, and it is one of our elements in our comprehensive plan. And so the small group indicated that we would like to have each board send a letter to the Board of Selectmen that we would request that they, that they request funding from whatever source, free cash or whatever, to be able to do a study such as this for Falmouth. And so that's one thing we wanted to bring up tonight under the committee reports as to whether the board would like to see such a thing, and I think it would be extremely advisable. It does not take the place of the FEMA recommendations. FEMA is still in place for insurance purposes, but it gives a more realistic expectation of what we can see happen in case of certain events. Nor'easters being one of the major ones, and hurricanes being one of the other major ones that we will see that will hit us. And personally, I found it very interesting because I always knew that the land was subsiding, but I didn't know by how much per year. And that report says approximately a half inch per year it's subsiding. So not all, only are we getting increased water heights in the sea, but we are having the land slump. And they take all of this into account in that dynamic model as to what will happen in the future, which will be about 60 years out. So we thought it would be an excellent thing to issue a letter from the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. I'm going to assume will think it's an excellent thing, too, to do. And so the Board of Selectmen should be in receipt, if we agree to do so, of those two letters, and hopefully they will follow through on it.
One of the action items in the local comprehensive plan as well.
Yeah. It was, it was approved by town meeting two years ago, and the timeframe on that was two, within the next two years. So the comprehensive plan already called for it, and the time's already expired, so we're just bringing it back up again.
Is, has that report been put on the town website yet? Or is that going on? We don't have.
The report being, what are you talking about?
What we saw.
Um, not that I know of. That's kind of private.
It's proprietary information right now.
Yeah, that, the report was done by Kleinfelder and Woods Hole Group.
Paul?
I concur with what Pat said, but I want to add one thing, too. There is funding available for this study if we get into the cycle for next year. So this emergency on getting this submitted, so we get a queue for the payment of the, of the study.
And Woods Hole Group, remember, also said they would be willing to help the town. I would assume that help comes with a bill, but I, you know, he didn't indicate, but I would assume it does, would help the town be able to apply for the appropriate funding for that.
John?
Was there any mention of whether or not any other communities, towns on the Cape are looking into the same thing, or possibly the Cape Cod Commission?
There was no mention of that in.
No studies?
No. No. And that's why I thought it was so really good that they had a synopsis, the executive summary of the information that was handed out of Oak Bluff's study. And I, I've gotten through just a small portion of it, and I found it, wow, this is really good information that we could very much make use of, that sort of report.
I did see a recent email from another scientist, scientist friend who's pointed out that other Cape towns are receiving coastal zone management grants already for planning for a sea level rise. So it's already in effect, and Chelsea and Everett right now are in the process of getting grant money for this, from this coastal zone management fund. So if funds are there, it's in place. We better move quickly.
And there are rounds of funding.
Correct.
And they've been hired by different entities, like Logan Airport for one, National Grid, and some of the oil companies, because they want to see where to place their facilities so that they don't have a problem. And so it's been, it's been a lot of private entities, and I look at the town as being one of those entities that is going to be impacted because of our infrastructure and our responsibility to that. So I think a study for us to do that so that we can start planning would be quite used to some funds.
Tom, you have another question?
So we have the Cape Cod Commission coming here in a couple of weeks. Is it a question that we can ask? Is it going to be part of our discussion? I'm not sure what, what the format's going to be when they, when they come here, but it seems to be a Cape, Cape-wide situation, so.
Yeah. This is more structured and specific study of the Davis Straits area for land use planning, zoning, building, not really.
Not town-wide.
Not town-wide, not about, essentially what Hingham has done and others have done. It's a vulnerability assessment, step over above some of the hazard planning that we're doing today.
Oh, I should also mention, it's vulnerability, yes, but unlike, well, here you go, folks, you've got all kinds of trouble. They put a lot of recommendations as to ways to mitigate these problems that they are predicting.
The only thing I'm not clear on is the exact language we need in this letter.
I think that the first thing is you request Selectmen to engage Woods Hole Group or another, you know, agency similar to perform a vulnerability assessment. That's just the first request. Then that kicks Woods Hole Group into gear to come before Selectmen with a proposal or at least a rough outline of what's required. Selectmen, that's the first action, is just to ask for a vulnerability assessment. Then the in-depth mitigation strategies come later, possibly funded by the Coastal Zone Management Grant.
Yeah, that's that big report.
Right.
Brian, do you have the language we need for this letter?
It should probably be a letter signed by both chairmen, so you send the same letter.
That'd be a good idea. Why don't you coordinate with them to make?
So one letter signed by both chairman.
Better than two letters.
Oh, yes.
That's a great, that's a really good idea.
And what you're looking for is a commitment of, of some resources.
Yes.
Towards the town's vulnerability assessment, whether that be grant aid or local funds or whatever that might be.
Good.
Signed by, signed by the chairman of the local, sorry, the Planning Board.
And Conservation. That's great.
And while you're investigating, would you see if there's any possibility of applying CPC funds to these open space ideas?
To a vulnerability assessment?
Yeah.
I, I will look, and my sense is no.
Take a chance.
I will look.
Well, I think I'd also like to point out that somebody, and I do not recall who, asked the question, because that's what, the bottom line is always important, what such a study might cost. And you do have to understand that there's no way that you can hold anybody with their feet to the fire, but it is not outrageously high.
Right. I think, I think at this point, the board just wants to send a letter saying that those resources need to be committed.
Yeah.
Whatever they may be, something that then comes through the procurement process, and let that, let others take care of that.
Notice I didn't mention the figure. I'm just letting people know it's certainly not outrageously high.
One letter saying that it's time for some sort of resource allocation towards a vulnerability assessment and.
Any other committee reports?
I'd like to, I think that letter should also mention the funding source that is available, so the Board of Selectmen have the information. It's not something they're going to have.
Yes, whether, whether it be, I have here town, CZM, or CPA monies, in order to make me have a commitment.
Cape Cod Commission might have.
State agency, I'll, I'll get you the name.
Funding stream.
Or local, local state or federal, whatever that be. I'll, I'll put it in there, and I'll let, I'll pass it along to Jim and CC the board, and off we go.
Any other committee reports? No, hearing none. We'll move on to the next item is general correspondence. I don't know if I can accept this letter. It's in the file. I guess it's not to me anyways. It's to you and Suso and Michael Palmer, but it's Doug's rec. resignation effective, it isn't to me, but it's in our file, effective October 5th. It's in the file, so.
Wait a minute, we have to vote to accept it, don't we?
You, you need a vote of the board to alert the Selectmen.
Right, because they have to go out.
That you need to hold a joint meeting and to elect an, an individual to fill Mr. Brown's unexpired term to the next election.
So we, we do that by a mo, a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I move that we let the Selectmen know that we now have a vacancy on the Planning Board, and we will have to have a joint meeting to select a replacement.
Right.
Because they stole away our member.
No, it used to work.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm in favor of getting rid of myself.
Okay. Okay, there's a couple more things. Brian wanted to point out that this letter's come to the Planning Board. It's Fall Workshops for the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative for anybody. We've been exposed to some of these classes already. There's a whole list of them here. If this, anybody's interested, they can see where they are. They're all over the place, in different places, so there are some travel involved in it, but you should take a look at it.
And do some leaf peeping.
Yep. And I don't see any other correspondence in the file, and I think that uses up our agenda.
I move adjournment.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
It wasn't done in a second.